Good afternoon, everybody. We are about to begin. Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation. If you would like to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Please silence all electronic devices. No one may approach the dais at any time during this hearing. Chair and Speaker Adams, we are ready to begin.
Great. Good afternoon. My name is Councilmember Lincoln Ressler, and I have the privilege of being the Chair of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislations. It is an honor to be joined by our speaker. Today, we'll be hearing a bill that she has introduced, Introduction 1088, which would create a Charter Revision Commission empowered to revise the city charter. The New York City Charter is the framework for how our city is governed. It defines how our city government operates and the balance of power between our elected officials. A Charter Review Commission is an opportunity to conduct a thorough, comprehensive review of the structure of our government and for everyday New Yorkers to have a say in how our city is governed. Since the adoption of the city's first charter way back in 1897, the charter has been revised countless times. Charter revisions have been particularly important in moments of crisis. Our last major charter review was in 1989, following one of the worst corruption scandals in our city's history during the Koch administration. The '89 Commission implemented sweeping reforms to restructure how city government works, eliminating the Board of Estimate and creating a strong merrility. These reforms were essential to preventing corruption and ensuring integrity and accountability in our city government. Thirty-five years later, our city is once again in a moment of crisis. We're facing a series of deeply troubling allegations with the mayor under indictment and the first deputy mayor, the school's chancellor, the police commissioner, and the deputy mayor for public safety, all forced to resign amid ongoing investigations. It is clear that the mayor's ability to serve our city is compromised, and the exodus of senior officials is unprecedented. This scandal-ridden administration and their ability to function begs the question of whether we currently have the right balance of power in city government. And I am grateful, deeply grateful, that Speaker Adams is spearheading the effort to bring experienced New Yorkers together to think about how we can improve the operations and efficacy of city government and restore confidence in the public sector. Our speaker is a wise leader. She's prepared to make what I would say is the unusual choice to spend her political capital on achieving long-term goals that will benefit future generations of New Yorkers. Her commitment to strengthening checks and balances and enhancing accountability in our city government will, over time, provide more New Yorkers the help they deserve and better and ensure that our government operates honestly. I also admire and share her deep pride in the institution of the city council. This Charter Revision Commission created by Speaker's legislation will consist of members appointed by the speaker, the mayor, the comptroller, the public advocate, and each borough president, all the key elected officials in our government. They will come together with ample time, opportunity, and commitment to solicit meaningful input from New Yorkers across the city. When we improve the structure of city government, we can deliver better outcomes for New Yorkers. This moment in our city's history requires us to advance transparency, accountability, and integrity. Just as the '89 Charter Revision Commission created the structure and framework for our city government to thrive over the ensuing decades, I am hopeful that this new undertaking by Speaker Adams will recalibrate the balance of power, ensure real accountability of elected officials, and restore faith in our government. This is the right deliberate path forward. I'm eager to hear from members of the public who have joined us today to share their expertise on how we can conduct a thoughtful review of our charter. I want to thank our committee counsel, Jason Gannonathy and Erica Cohen, for their hard work in putting the hearing together today. I'd also like to thank my communications director, Neem Mooney, and my chief of staff, Molly Haley, who is extraordinary. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Lynn Schulman and Councilmember Vicky Palladino. Queens is in the House. And now, I would like to turn it over to our fine speaker, Adrian Adams. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair Ressler. We are Queens strong here today.
There we go.
I kind of like that. Thank you so much, Chair, for leading today's Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation hearing on Introduction 1098, my legislation, to establish a Charter Revision Commission to review the city charter. And thank you to everyone who's joined us here today. A Charter Revision Commission presents a unique opportunity to propose ideas on how to revise the city's constitution to improve city government and make it more responsive to the needs of New Yorkers. It is a serious undertaking that requires a full review of the city charter, and it should include robust public engagement to hear from New Yorkers. That has been the standard of past commissions. For decades, there have been commissions that were created to advance meaningful reforms, such as changes to the oversight authority of the Civilian Complaint Review Board, conflict of interest laws, strengthening the public campaign finance system, and other measures to improve city government. However, over the last several months, we have seen the public's trust in city government weaken, underscoring the importance of strengthening that bond with New Yorkers. The Mayor's Commission rushed a Charter Revision Commission process this year, taking less than two months to propose changes and then voting to advance their specific proposals only two days after they had been publicly released. The Mayor's Commission even amended the proposals just hours before their final vote without any public notice at all. This brazen misuse of the Charter Revision Commission process completely undermines the principles of good governance. It has resulted in ballot proposals two through six, which would undermine checks and balances, weaken oversight and accountability of city agencies, and make city government less responsive to New Yorkers. These proposals were not developed with New Yorkers' best interests at heart. We cannot accept this as the norm for Charter Revision Commissions. It is crucial that, as a city, we prevent this anomaly from becoming our new baseline. That is why today, we will review Introduction 1088, my bill to establish a Charter Revision Commission that restores the model standards for how to revise the city charter through a transparent, thoughtful, and inclusive process. In contrast to the Mayor's rushed commission, we will provide at least eight months for this new commission's work before submitting proposals for consideration in the 2025 general election or up to 20 months for the 2026 general election. This commission will also prohibit registered lobbyists from serving as members and provide representation for all city elected officials. Through this commission, we hope to unite all stakeholders and New Yorkers to advance a Charter Revision Commission process that is focused on strengthening our democracy and improving city government for the benefit of New Yorkers, not for political gamesmanship. I look forward to hearing from all stakeholders about how to best restore confidence in our city government and reestablish strong standards for Charter Revision Commissions moving forward. Thank you all once again. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much, Speaker Adams, for your remarks and for your leadership on this most important of issues. Before opening the hearing for public testimony, I'd just like to remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times, that they're not testifying. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is permitted from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have three minutes to speak on today's hearing topics. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. It's now my privilege to call up our first panel, former Speaker Christine Quinn. We have Susan Lerner, Executive Director of Common Cause New York, Ben Weinberg, Director of Public Policy at Citizens Union, and on Zoom, we have Professor Eric Lane, who was the Executive Director and Counsel to the revered 1989 Charter Revision Commission. Thank you all for joining us. Maybe we could start with the former speaker, if that works, and go from there.
It's so fun to have Eric Lane on Zoom.
Isn't it?
My name is Christine Quinn, and I'm presently the President and CEO of Wynn Women in Need, the largest provider of shelter and permanent housing to homeless women with children. I mention that affiliation as well as being former speaker because the work of a true Charter Revision Commission could very much help not-for-profits like Wynn. So this isn't something just for the benefit of the balance of power in government, but also for entities who work with and contract with the city. Now, Chair Ressler talked about the Charter Revision Commission 35 years ago, and what they undertook was monumental, right? They had a federal civil rights violation. They were going to get rid of the Board of Estimate. There was just so much that had to get done. So it only is logical to assume that in some areas, they were perfect; in some areas, they went too far; and some areas, they didn't go far enough. Now, if you look at the ones where they didn't go far enough, there are probably not quite a few in balance of all they did, but some that are very significant, right? So only the mayor's side can decide what the revenues are in the budget. That's a massive power to only have in the mayor's office because that then determines if the mayor says there isn't a surplus, then everybody has to cut or keep things constant. When we know that the council's budget revenue numbers, done by the council's economists, are always more accurate than the mayor's have been. Now, I always said it's because we were smarter and better. The truth is, we do it later, and we have more information, but nonetheless, stick with the smarter and better. So that's too much power in one person's hands. In land use, constantly, in all my years in government, we would want to do something in a rezoning, and the City Planning Commission would say, "That's out of scope." Well, can you define scope? I must have gotten 10 definitions of scope, different ones, in my time in the council. What it really means is, we don't want to. We don't want you to do that. We don't want you to substantially make a change, which then leaves the council in a position where they can't be the voice of neighborhoods. To a similar regard, when a landmark district comes to the council, the council has the very enormous power of making it smaller, which is rarely ever requested, and no ability to make it bigger and to include buildings or blocks that the Landmark Preservation Commission has left out. So I just raised those three examples, in finance and two in land use, to say some of the biggest questions that are out there for everyday people are left for the mayor to answer without any ability of the council to answer them. Now, time and again, and it's not just this mayor. Mayors have hidden behind these sham Charter Revision Commissions because they don't want to get to the heart of the matter. But if you don't get to the heart of the matter, then how are we going to solve problems like the need for more affordable housing without overdevelopment and erasing the character of a neighborhood? How are we going to work on putting things in the baseline of the budget so that we don't have to revisit things over and over, like you may have put this in the baseline already, but over and over like senior centers and other things that should be fundamental? How are we going to really have power over agencies when the council has advice and consent on the most random of agency heads and not across the board? And if this is an institution that has true oversight, you have to have that in the same way that other legislative bodies do. So I would welcome the opportunity to work with the council on this. There is a report from 2010 that the council put out where we had compiled ideas and worked with the members on coming up with ideas, and I sadly render the guess that most of them are still valid. So thank you.
It is really a privilege to have you here with us today, Speaker Quinn. So thank you for your just very thoughtful insights. We're now going to hear from one of the foremost experts on the charter, Professor Lane. If we have you on Zoom, we'll kick it to you.
You do.
Great.
So I want to thank you for the opportunity to appear and to appear before the committee and Speaker Adams. And also, I feel a sort of measure of pride because probably the city council of the city of New York is the only legislative body in the state of New York that ever has a hearing on legislation. Since in my nine years, six years as Chief Counsel of Senate Democrats in Albany and numerous years I was there observing the legislature after that, when I was working at the Prinzen Center, I think it's fair to say, up until about at least five years ago, the state assembly or state legislature never has a hearing on any bill, ever. Never, I mean that. Maybe they've changed in the last five years or so. I would say, Chairman Ressler, that when the Board of Estimate was eliminated and we ended our work, we did not only strengthen the mayor, I think we also strengthened the council by first leaving it alone as the only policymaking decision in the city and through other means. And as former Speaker Quinn said, we probably didn't go far enough in some ways or went too far in other ways. I would love to claim perfection, but I know that is beyond human capacity. So I know we didn't do everything right. Plus, we've had 35 years of opportunity to witness things, and therefore, I'm sure there are things that time has proven to be incorrect. I would say this, though, with Speaker Quinn's list of ideas. I mean, there are also council failures here that made some of our changes impossible, such as insisting on line items on the budget, but then making deals, as we're starting the process, next thing you know, there's a deal between the mayor and the council, and so therefore, the demands for line items get lost in the need to make a deal, which is understandable, but it's one of the things I think people ought to be looking. But I'm not here to talk about the things that the council ought to look at or not look at or the commission. I want to just talk about commissions in general and why I think they work and why they don't work, which I think I probably have considerable knowledge about and far more than I do with what's wrong now in the city. I want to say, first of all, our commission, I do agree with Speaker Quinn's characterization of a lot of the commissions that followed ours as sham commissions. Not sham because several of them, the first of them, when Mayor Giuliani was angry at Speaker Valone about something the council was doing about the Yankees, and he set up a commission to block. It is similar to the one that was set up by this mayor to block you with respect to the Oversight Through Confirmation bill that you had, which I thought myself was a very good bill, an area where we didn't, in my commission, go far enough to expand the power on confirmation. So my own view of this is that the things that you need to really have a good commission, do the kind of work that Speaker Adams described. I think that you need a diverse commission, first of all, and I think that's provided for in the bill that's being discussed right now by having different members of the different elected officials appoint members. I think you need a real reason. I think our commission worked fabulously because there was a real crisis in the city at the time, which had been that the Board of Estimate had been declared unconstitutional. So this institution, which was basically the apex of most of the government's processes, could no longer function. And so we had something we really had to do. It was major. And along the route, on the basis of the state laws commands that Charter Commission look at everything, we were able to do numerous collateral changes and reforms in the city, dealing with administrative process and ethics and the nayda things. And so I think that you're off to the right start with having this kind of diverse commission. And I also think there is a motivating crisis in the city which will help you a lot to have this work taken seriously, and that is, of course, the indictment of the mayor, the trouble with all of the staff he's picked over, you know, not all, many of the members of his staff, the process by which they are chosen and the like, certainly has reflected horribly on the city and has created a lot of concern. And that concern, I think, will help you in the following way, for example, to find very serious members of the commission for yourself. And I think who the council chooses really sets the example for whom everybody would choose. And I would urge you to find, start off with a chairperson who really has some gravitas and is going to get respect. So in my, in our case, we started off with Dick Ravitch, and then we followed up with Fred Schwartz. Both were sort of towering figures in the city, and they added a legitimacy that when other people were asked, they were willing to serve because they saw by the appointment of the chairman, they saw that this was going to be a serious effort. Otherwise, neither Schwartz nor Ravitch would have ever accepted that. I think a real problem that arises, so I think you do have the opportunity, a structure by which you can really appoint good people. I think there's a crisis, a significant crisis in the city that will interest good people to serve. And so I think those are two ingredients that are really very positive toward making a really serious effort here. I think that you have to think a lot about staffing. Every one of these commissions, these quote sham quote commissions, I shouldn't even put it in quotes because they share Speaker Quinn's view, even though some of them have done useful things, all small monies, the legislature could have done them without spending the money for a commission. The staff's always been the mayor's staff in those commissions. I mean, it's always been the mayor's staff. There's been no effort to make them independent. There's been no allegiance between the staff and the commission head and the commission itself. So the commission effectively had very little input into the process itself. So I think that finding independent, people that are independent, I don't mean crazy, I mean independent, is a very important thing here. And again, I'll go back to saying, so I think that finding a way to staffing this thing is going to be critical and making sure that there's good staffing that has some loyalty to the commission. Otherwise, you're not going to find independent members to join it, or they're going to be dissatisfied, and you're not going to get the quality of work you want if the staff has to keep looking over its shoulder at, you know, Speaker Adams, for example. And I don't mean that that's what's going to happen. I'm just using that as an example. And then budgeting, so there is a provision that Mayor Koch read under our commission to basically require the council and the mayor to give us whatever we needed. Now, I thought that was broadly read, but basically, there has to be some, if you really want a big job and a good job done, you have to pay for it. I don't think we're the example, but I will tell you that we had probably 70 staff at some point in our own offices, right across the street from City Hall. I'm not saying you have to do that, but to make this really work, in my view, you have to try to give it as much independence. Doesn't mean there shouldn't be political input. We talked to elected officials all the time. We spent a lot of time with the Corporation Counsel's Office, and, you know, every proposal we made, we vetted in a number of places in city government, but not for them to tell us what not to do, but to tell us what was wrong with what we were doing. We wanted to hear, why won't this work? So we could make independent judgments about that. That takes time, it takes money, and the like. So I would urge, I mean, I think you have the crisis. You have the structure for creating a really independent commission. Eight months is a good time, maybe they need longer. Actually, the commission is by law allowed to decide when it wants to put something on the ballot. I think you have to have numerous public meetings and public hearings. I do believe that the commission is subject to the State Freedom of Information Act. I had questioned that in my own work, and I had found that deciding that they were, and it worked to our benefit. It worked to our benefit, I think, to have the public involved in every meeting we did. It disallowed people from saying crazy things that they might have wanted to say in private, they wouldn't say in public. So I think you've built all of the ingredients for a potentially very good commission as long as you sort of make sure that you're appointing independent people and you get some decent, good staff and some independence of that staff or loyalty to that staff, to the commission, not to the elected officials. So I think that would be a very good start. Where I thought, so this is the last part of what I'm going to say. Where I thought it would, when we did this charter, the places that I thought we would really be examining quickly thereafter, which I had been wrong about, because you haven't. But I always thought, so the power of the Board of, excuse me, the power of the Borough Presidents, there was a lot of you and cry that we had taken too much of their power away and that they would be meaningless. I never thought that was true, but I always thought that would be something that would be later examined. We were lucky, we were lucky that Claire's speaking about so many representatives from Queens that are there, as Speaker Adams referred to. We were lucky that Claire Schulman, with her staff leader, Nick Garifas, now federal Judge Nick Garifas, were very supportive of our work after they made us give them a number of things and compromises that we made. I would say about that, this is a political act in one sense because anything that gets done has to be approved by a, but the staff has to be approved by a commission and then has to be approved by the public in a referendum. So there are politics in this. And a commission that doesn't want to win, doesn't want to win the vote ultimately, is not doing a good job. You don't do all this work to lose. And that means, like in everything, there will be politics involved, and that means there will be compromises involved. And I think that's a positive thing, not a negative thing. I remember a time, and this is just the last story, then I'll stop. We went up to two things. One, I never thought, I thought we weren't tough enough on the council on land use. I didn't want, I wanted this mechanism that would stop them from having individuals be able to review and veto, individual members veto things. I think that's very bad for government. I didn't win that battle, but I didn't win that battle because Gene Mushinoff, who was in the lobby as for, I forget the name of the organization. And, yeah, what was it?
It was NIPerg.
NIPerg, and Ruth Messenger had spent hours sort of beating up on us, and finally, we made a compromise with them. But the biggest, one compromise that you really, I think, get a kick out is, we went up to the New York Times because when you do a referendum of a commission like this, you need to get the New York Times editorial support. And you need to because particularly in Manhattan, I'm not sure how influential it is, other places. If they were to say no to a commission refer, you know, it's very hard to win since lots of people are taking their judgment on that. So we went up to the New York Times, and we said, here we are, Fred Schwartz and I, here we are, here's our final proposals, here's our books of proposals. And I forget who was the editor then, editor of the editorial page, but he looked at us and he said, "Well, why are you here? You gave us our piece," which was a land use compromise that we made. So, you know, even the New York Times, it was a bargaining effort here. Anyway, that's my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has, but I think this is really, my hat's off for this because I think it's a really good start, the way the bill itself lays out the way the members will be changed and the way that Speaker Adams has spoken about really giving it time and holding hearings. You can't do what we did. I mean, we did 140 hearings, and nobody's going to do that again. But I really think this is, looks like the beginning of a very good and after 35 years needed effort. That's it. Thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Professor Lane, that was tremendous testimony. We really appreciate you being here and sharing your insight. We really appreciate you being here and sharing your insights, and I think laying out exactly the right path forward. Um, I want to just acknowledge Councilmember Gennaro is with us. We've also been joined by Brooklyn's own David Carr. Um, he has a little, I know, he has a little piece of Brooklyn now, so we claim him. Um, and I now like to turn it over to a couple of our distinguished leaders in the good government space, beginning with Susan Lerner of Common Cause.
Actually, I'm going to suggest that we start with Citizens Union. I think logically their recommendations go first in mine, follow theirs.
We will defer to your judgment.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Hard to follow the previous testimony, so I will do my best. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Ben Weinberg. I'm the Director of Public Policy for Citizens Union. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to comment on this bill today. We, we've just completed a charter revision commission process, which we at Citizens Union believed was flawed, and we have criticized that process again, 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 the commission's genesis, their capacity, timeframe, public input. We've always said that comprehensive reviews of the charter should be done absent of a political agenda, through an independent commission that has the time and resources to conduct that important and thoughtful task. So we applaud the speaker and we thank her for committing to reestablish these strong standards for the charter revision process. Uh, we are particularly supportive of the provisions in intro 1088 that address these principles, including the ones that require the commission to conduct an extensive outreach campaign, to clarify that it would review the entire charter, ban the appointment of registered lobbyists, define the commission as an agency for foil purposes, and also requires it maintains a website with agendas, transcripts, and webcasts. Um, however, we do believe the bill can be improved in the following ways. First, on the proposed composition of the commission. So the bill as it currently is would provide the speaker with the majority of appointments, nine out of 17, and would set the same number as a quorum. Now, given the politicized charter revision process that we just saw, and the damage we believe it has done to the public trust in our city's constitution, we don't believe the next commission should be perceived as a council-controlled commission, which is subject to any political fights between the two branches. So we, we urge the council to follow the approach that was taken by the 2018 law, sorry, that was the basis for this bill, which more evenly distributed appointments across city government. Uh, that was, was it 15 members, four speaker, four mayor, one for every other official and a quorum of over half. The chair there was jointly appointed by the speaker and the mayor. And as a preferred alternative, the bill should establish either a higher quorum or set as some super majority, uh, voting requirement. Now, the point is, again, given the, what we saw this year, to encourage agreement from members of appointed officials and restore trust. Uh, just two quick other comments. The timeline, we were encouraged and thankful for the speaker, for her announcement that this future commission would have between eight and 20 months to work. We just note that the bill as written does not require that timeframe. So theoretically, commissioners can be appointed and then decide they file questions with the city clerk way before that time, before the legal deadline. Uh, we support state legislation that would establish at least six months for charter revision commission. We thank the speaker and the chair and other members who stood with us this week in support of that bill. So we, we ask that, um, requirement to be in the, in this bill as well, a minimum timeframe of at least six months. Lastly, we suggest two small additions related to transparency, I'll just finish. One is to clarify that the lobbying activity involving the commission is, is reportable. The other one is to clarify that the commission should maintain timely publications of minutes, resolutions, and the testimony it receives on top of the other stuff that are in the bill, like agendas, transcripts, and webcasts. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much, Ben. And now Susan.
Thank you. And we pretty much agree with the recommendations of Citizens Union, so I'm not going to repeat what Ben went over. And, um, we are concerned about a couple of areas. One, I do want to say we are very grateful for the seriousness of this effort. We are genuinely tired of seeing charter revision commissions used as political footballs. It happened in the Giuliani administration, it happened in the Bloomberg administration, it happened in the de Blasio administration, and now we live through it in the Adams administration, and that is, as Professor Lane pointed out, not what a charter revision commission is supposed to be about. So we're very grateful for this effort and grateful for this opportunity to make some suggestions for what we hope would be strengthening the bill. We do have some concerns about the size of the commission. 17 seems quite large, and we agree with Citizens Union that we would like to see a more equal distribution. Uh, we've raised questions contrary to what Professor Lane pointed out, questioning whether the commission itself ought to be able to choose its chair, because we are interested in a thoughtful and independent, uh, public discussion of how to strengthen and improve our democracy, and be sure that our city government has the requisite checks and balances, and goes into the details that, uh, former Speaker Quinn talked about in terms of budgeting, support for necessary agencies and services, so that they, they too are not subject to politics and all of a sudden the libraries are closed on Sundays. So independence is important to us, um, and, uh, we do recognize the utility of allowing elected and appointed officials to be on the commission and to be, um, employees, but we suggest there be a cap, because again, going to the question of independence and having a staff whose loyalty is first and foremost to the charter revision process and not to whomever appointed them. And we are particularly concerned about public participation and transparency. And we have no problem with, uh, really being clearer in the bill regarding the number of public hearings that have to be held. In our experience, what is most productive for a commission is to hold hearings before they make any initial determinations, hear from the public. But once they've released a report, um, to have another round of hearings, and then once they've got their final conclusions before they actually vote on the final, um, proposals that they hear yet again from the public, because you will see, our experience with redistricting and charter revision commissions is the more specific information that's provided to the public, the more response you get from the public when they have something very specific to respond to. So adding in those three levels, as a minimum, the commission can always do more, is to us important. We want to be sure that public outreach is truly embedded in this process, ensuring that ethnic media and others, uh, are part of the outreach program, and that the websites that's set up, um, will receive comments. And importantly, I think we are seeing right now with the proposals that are on the ballot, that the language that is presented to the voters is extremely important. And, um, we are the strong advocates for plain language. We helped to draft and pass the plain language, uh, requirement in state law, which the state Board of Elections ignored, uh, and we suggest to you that directing the commission to work out the language that will be on the ballot so that it is no more complex than an eighth or ninth grade reading level, and that the question is presented to the public in terms of the impact and not the legal mechanism, will go a far way towards assuring the public that they know what they're voting on and the likelihood that they will approve what the commission suggests. So thank you.
Thank you so much. That was a, just a highly engaging and insightful panel, so thank you to each of you. Um, I'd like to just offer colleagues a chance, Speaker Adams, would you like to ask any questions?
I did. First of all, thank you all. Your testimony, simply amazing. Professor Lane, I can't thank you enough for laying out everything that you just laid out, um, to this committee, to myself, and bringing amazing expertise to the table. So thank you so much, along with our panelists today. I only had one question, and that's for my, my former speaker, um, speaker to speaker. Speaker Quinn, just, you know, from a speaker's standpoint, with regard to this, this past commission that we just saw do eight weeks maybe worth of work this summer, what, just give us some highlights of what struck you the most about, um, you know, the impaneling of the commission, uh, the public hearings, uh, and finally, the ballot proposals. As speaker, just walk in my shoes, I need a sanity check.
So, um, you know, sometimes when elected officials do things that are, uh, not that I've ever done this, completely self-serving, you try to dress it up as something else. That was not the case. You introduced a piece of legislation that I think is thoughtful and makes sense around advice and consent. I think it would up the council's hand in oversight, but I also think it would, uh, create a better bridge between a council and a mayor, having to go through that, you know, process. We hear of, you know, people who are being appointed secretary on the federal level, even assistant or deputy secretary, going through days and days of preparation, right, that, to go before Congress. So for, for commissioners to have to go through days and days to go before the council would send a message to those commissioners that the council is their oversight entity, and that the opinions of council members, you know, matter and are not to be disregarded. So you introduced that bill, and then, in about as much time it takes for a revolving door to go around, there was a charter revision commission, designed clearly to bump your legislation out of, uh, the process, because it would have had to go through a charter revision commission, which you knew, but then the mayor supersedes everybody, which is something the charter revision should in fact, uh, look at, is why a mayor has such a big foot. But, okay, but then there was no, uh, call for suggestions of commissioners. There was no true public hearing process. There was no, as far as I could tell, even drafts that went along, you know, for comment, and then you came out with these, uh, five questions that, if you read them, even not being in the plain language they, they should be in, they're clearly only about giving the mayor more power in areas that he is not lacking power. So there's nothing here but politics, and the way the charter is set up, there's no way to stop the politics, because even if you shed a light on it, which I think you did quite well, that disinfectant sunshine can't stop it because it's already going. So everything you, I don't know exactly what you think, but everything I think you think is correct.
Thank you so much, Speaker Quinn. Thank you for your insight on that, and, um, again, for presenting that sanity check for, for myself also, and I guess reinforcing for me that this is the path that we need to take going forward. So thank you very much.
That was so well said. Um, I'd now like to turn over to Councilmember Gennaro, if you have any questions or items?
Not right now.
Good. Um, okay, well, I will jump in, I've got lots of questions. Um, I was really looking forward to this conversation. So maybe I'll kick it over to Professor Lane. I think, you know, as you discussed and Speaker Quinn discussed, uh, the reforms passed by the '89 Charter Revision Commission created a more powerful mayor, and also a more powerful council in a number of ways to serve as a check on the power of the mayor. Do you think we've seen a shift in the balance of power between the mayor and the council in the ensuing 35 years? The implementation of term limits, other changes? How do you think, do you think that we need to revisit that balance of power between the mayor and the council, and how do you think we should approach doing so?
Well, I think, I do think you should always be looking at that. So 35 years is a lot of time, and so after 35 years, it strikes me, is that would be a very, um, good thing to look at, and important thing to look at. I do think that you tried to address that in the legislation which led, which was the only reason that I could tell, which for the mayor's, um, most recent, um, charter commission was to stop you from going forward with that, and actually to stop the public from having an opportunity to vote on that, since your legislation for the expanded confirmation process, which as I said, makes a lot of sense to me, and the way you did it as well. Um, I think, you know, it has to go to referendum because it's reducing the power of an elected official, and therefore the public would have had an opportunity to vote on that, and yet they were denied this opportunity by the creation of a commission, which really, there's no way, I mean, I'm sure, there are very nice people on that commission, I've known Hazel Dukes, for example, since I started in politics in 1970 in Nassau County. So I've known her a long time, and, uh, but, you know, it's just, there was no reason for it to exist, and they acted basically understanding that, and they were totally snapped by the mayor, so there was no chance for any independent, uh, non-mayorally approved work to be done. And, um, now the public's going to vote on things that they're going to, you know, basically have no idea what they're voting on, there's no education campaign, there's nothing. So I totally agree with, so to me, that was a joke. Uh, this is a serious matter. Um, I think the confirmation thing's for one, and everything to do with the appointment process, given the crisis in the city right now is required, and, you know, more checks obviously have to come from that, the rest actually, um, you know, and then the council has to promise to do its work where it's necessary, but the opportunity for doing its work through the, um, confirmation process, I think, is a very good beginning. Um, I also think in the budget, I share, we tried, Speaker Quinn had talked about revenues. Uh, we, I, as I recall, we tried to do something about that, but not obviously to, I don't know, I, there was a long discussion about it in the commission in public. If anybody wants to see it, their transcripts are in all the major libraries, but, um, you know, whether you, I think there has to be more involvement by the council in the revenue choice. I also think the council could improve, could really do itself some good, although it's hard to do what I'm about to say, and I, and I've had this discussion years ago with Speaker Quinn, and that is, and various councils to the speaker, um, this whole idea about line items was a big deal when we did it, we required more line item in the budget. Um, there were demands made back and forth between the council council's office and the Corporation Council over the years, but they would always end up getting collapsed, as I said before, by the, um, the rush to get the budget done at the end, and so then there became a deal, so the process points got lost. And I see how that happens. I'm, you know, I've been in politics, I've had to do these things myself, I understand as well, but I do think there would be a real improvement in transparency, um, you know, if the, the line item things were taken more seriously, and certainly through the land use, through the budgeting process, I think there's areas really to increase, uh, council power. And I, I do, but on one, the other thing that does bother me, and I think I've spoken to Speaker Quinn about this years ago, and certainly her successor, uh, to no avail with her successor, um, I have not liked, I tried like anything to stop the council, the possibility for council members to have, um, effectively veto power over projects, smaller projects that are in their district. I thought that was a very bad use of legislative power. It doesn't involve the entire council as a policymaking body, it involves one member and, you know, trading between members, you stop this project, I'll vote, I'll help you stop another project. And we got, you know, I lost that battle. We had this crazy thing called the triple no, which I really loved, but it was crazy. And, um, that got, um, that got changed at the last moment, not in the last days, as Speaker Adams referring, but in the last part of the session, because of Ruth Messenger and other lobbying, I, I even, um, Ms. Lerner, who I want to say hello to, I didn't know she was on the panel, uh, I think Common Cause was involved in that and lobbying us to get rid of that. The way it got resolved was that Speaker Valone had promised, under Gail Benjamin, who's a land use committee, under her leadership, that they would not allow individual members to stop projects for, you know, not in my backyard stuff, with, you know, the obvious are going to have a voice in it, but they weren't able to veto it. I, I think, under, um, Speaker Quinn's successor, is my recollection, this has now become more habitual than I would have wanted, so I think that ought to be looked at. I don't know if it's caused, it did cause a problem for a while, I don't know if it's a problem now, um, something I would think about looking at, but again, I haven't really paid attention to the details of city governance for about five years. Um, so, I mean, I, you, I think one of the major questions is mayoral power, and how the council or maybe other elected officials can play a role in, um, through transparency and other means of restraining, uh, the mayor's, a mayor's, not the mayor's, but a mayor's, restraining a mayor's, um, overly, overly, um, quick acts of what they would call discretion and limiting some of that discretion. So I, that's a long answer to your question, so I So I, that's a long answer to your question, so I think yes.
It was a great answer and really appreciate it. And I, you know, I thought both your comments and Speaker Quinn's comments around kind of the politicization of budget estimates and some of the inaccurate budget estimates we've seen and how they've been used as kind of tactical ploys in battles with the council. I think it really does underscore the importance of.
Can I just say one thing about that, if you don't mind? I'm sorry to interrupt. The politicization of budget, of revenue estimates is a reality. The question really is whether the only power to politicize them should be with the, with the mayor and the council shouldn't have a role. I mean, they're all, everybody's going to say either it's too high or too low and, you know, it's, it's part of the business of trying to reach a deal. So I think that there has to be a way for the council to be better armed in that kind of, if I may say, battle.
Yeah.
And I would just add, I agree, you know, it's quite frustrating if you're speaker and only one side is playing the game.
Yeah.
But it also should have guardrails on it.
Right.
Right? Any process that will be politicized should have some level of protection. Now, that's not easy to draft or do, but it should be sought after.
Yeah.
And it could be the independent budget office has some way to restrain it or something.
Yeah, and that's actually kind of, I wanted to move into that area to ask Speaker Quinn a question. You know, we looked back on the work you did back in 2010 and as you noted, many of the themes that you raised back then are as relevant today as they were back then. The, one of the items you suggested changes around was the composition of the Conflicts of Interest Board and, you know, having council appointments to COIB, budget independence and kind of building off of what Professor Lane was just commenting on a moment ago. In addition to COIB or perhaps expanding on COIB, are there other independent entities or semi-independent entities in our city governmental structure that we should be thinking about strengthening and making more independent to provide greater transparency and accountability?
No, sorry. COIB, as was said, I've often thought that although the council does have appointees to the Health and, I still say Health and Hospitals Corporation, I know it's not called that anymore, but that we have appointments to the Health and Hospitals, I don't think they are significant enough in number. I don't think they end up having enough power on the Health and Hospitals Board. And I think the chair of the Health and Hospitals Board, given how significant our public hospitals are, should be either an entity that has advice and consent or is jointly appointed. But there needs to, and if that couldn't happen, then there needs to be more structure of real co-chairs or an executive committee or something that would make the body something different than just kind of this paper framework around a mayoral appointment. You know, the City Planning Commission, you can't do because that's not how the process works, but that's where the questions of scope have to be determined. You know, I, same thing with Landmarks Preservation Commission. I might, you might like to have councils there, but you can't. That's why we have to have something else worked out. We could have greater appointment, in my opinion, and it could make a difference to the Economic Development Corporation because the Economic Development Corporation can be an amazing entity that gets a lot done or kind of a sleepy entity that doesn't really get anything done. And if it is the latter, having more council representation or real council representation could show that fact and bring it back to life.
Helpful suggestions. And just one more item that you raised again back in 2010 that I think is particular salience these days for both your work and for issues that Speaker Adams has led on. You recommended that the charter should place the burden on the mayor to go to court to have a law declared invalid instead of forcing the council to have to sue. I raise that in the context of some of the FEP dynamics and other things. We've, you know, as you know, face similar issues. Do you think that that remains true?
I mean, look, anybody who's seen Schoolhouse Rock knows how a veto works everywhere in every government except for the city of New York. I mean, when a legislative body overrides a veto, then the law should be going into effect. And the government should do whatever it is supposed to do to put that law in effect. And if the mayor wants to stop it, then he or she has to go to court to make that happen. That we would have passed a law on the city council, sent it to the mayor, and he vetoed it, and then the council has to sue. It's just completely counterintuitive and really leaves the council in a position where to truly get the things they want to happen done or some part of them, they're forced into negotiations. When the legislative process, yes, should often be about negotiations, should often be about compromise, but sometimes not. Sometimes there are pieces of legislation that speak to the core of who an elected is or who or what the body, the city council is. And to that, to know that you're going to pass those kind of bills like taking care of homeless people and then you're going to have to go to court where you never know what's going to happen in court, right? An obvious thing could not be held up. That's not how the veto process works. I mean, it's interesting that the mayor has a pocket approval versus a pocket veto. You know, it'd be interesting to understand why that was, which I'm not opposed to that. But this makes no sense and really reduces the power of the council substantially.
Yeah, right. So well said.
Right. And the confidence of the public, Susan just said, right? They hear a bill pass and they're like, hey, where's the whatever? And it never comes.
And I keep forgetting to acknowledge my friend from Brooklyn, Councilmember Ina Vernikoff. I'm sorry, Ina. I'm getting, I'm enjoying this conversation.
Councilmember?
Please.
I just, I want to just add to what Speaker Quinn was saying. I, I think it's outrageous most times when the corporation council, I think this is a real fault of theirs that was, that, I don't know when it started on, you know, if the mayor wants to go to court, it shouldn't be the corp, after, you know, on this veto thing. When the bill is passed and there is a veto that is overridden, I don't see where the corporation council has any role in representing the mayor challenging that piece of legislation. I mean, I know they, they used to make up these kind of process flaws or constitutional issues, but what, their, their job is to represent the city and the city includes the council and the process and the charter. So when that bill is vetoed and overridden, that's the law and the council has, the corp council has no business in my mind representing, you know, challenging the override at all. And I think you should look at that in the, in the power of the corporation, you know, the power of the corporation council. I think you could even, a charter commission should just look at that specific question and see whether or not that can be a power that's restrained even though the corporation council's officers go crazy.
I.
It's really inappropriate.
I agree.
I share Speaker Quinn's irritation, to put it nicely, over that, over that use of the corporation council. If you have to pay, let the mayor pay, but not, okay.
Totally. No, you're a thousand percent right. And I do think it's one of the, the areas where we've seen how helpful and effective advice and consent of corp counsel has been is that since the Charter Revision Commission and successful referendum that subjected corp counsel to advice and consent, the council has received, has, I think the law department has been more responsive to the city council than it had been previously and will give better advice in a more, with more advanced notice, tries to firewall off issues within the law department where they, some folks advise the mayor, some folks advise the council. There's been a degree of responsiveness that frankly did not exist before, where it felt much more squarely, like the corp counsel was only working for the mayor, whereas now it feels like the corp, the law department is there more for the city of New York as a whole. And I think that's why it's so important that we expand on that successful model, you know, as the speakers legislation would accomplish.
That's good to hear.
And, you know, others can disagree a few. They think I'm overstating it, but that's been my impression and I've heard that from many central staff at the council too, who I have a lot of respect for. Susan, you mentioned the members of the commission selecting the chair. And I will say, I was really, I found Professor Lane's suggestion noteworthy that in eighty-eight and eighty-nine, the selection of Dick Ravitch and Fritz Schwartz as such towering figures actually brought more talent and more capable people of gravitas onto the commission. Did that affect your thinking at all?
Yeah, I was definitely impressed by that. This is not a hill I would die on necessarily because of Professor Lane's comments. He's had much more experience fighting through commissions firsthand than I have. So I would balance my comment in light of his insight. And again, that's a question of frankly judgment and who you pick. So a lot of this is subjective.
And you referenced a cap on perhaps government staff that are working on the commission. Any elaboration that you could make there?
So, you know, I would not want to see a majority of staff members who are in existing positions. So yes, you want some expertise and some inside knowledge of how things work, but they should not be the dominant voice. You're going to need some outside balance. And so I would, you know, a cap is in the thirty, forty percent. It's got to be not a majority of the staff, to me.
Great. And, you know, it's always helpful when citizens' union and common cause are on the same page.
We agree.
We, we're happy to hear that.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
I, I think the idea of not having lobbyists is correct, though we need to, as I was making up a list of people who I thought could be on the Charter Revision Commission, we have to, it would be useful to define, and I could argue both ways, are we talking about not having people who are like work for the, like a lobbying firm or if you work for a company and they've made you register as a lobbyist? Does that, oh, you, yeah, me too. I kicked and screamed and then they had the lawyers call and say, just stop it. You have to register. You're going to get in trouble. So just not for today, but for in the future, where we draw the line. And you could draw it in either place and I, I think it would be fine, but it gets confusing.
No, I think it's a good point and, and we've been looking at legislation on this committee to restrict lobbying activity among senior government appointments at City Hall, elected officials upon their exit from government. And some of my colleagues have raised with me the question, you know, if I go work in a nonprofit organization, just like you have, Speaker Quinn, and, you know, end up lobbying on behalf of that nonprofit, that's very different than going to a lobbying firm. And the restrictions that we would want to impose on somebody who's doing advocacy for the homeless in speaking to colleagues, their former colleagues in the council is very different, right? And so it's important for us to not paint things in, with too broad a brush if we can avoid doing so. I don't know that we've figured out how to do that in the law just yet, but it's.
It's tricky. It's tricky. You spend a lot of time thinking about it. Yeah.
But we'll look at it. So it's an important, we appreciate the flag. And just wondering, Ben, if you would elaborate a little further on some of your suggestions to improve transparency. You suggested clarifying that lobbying activity involving the commission is a reportable action. Is that something you're recommending that we do in the legislation?
If it, yeah. The legislation now says that the commission will be an agency for FOIL, for Freedom Information Law. So we just want to confirm if it is indeed a thorough and long process that will deal with a whole host of issues related to city government. Some, as were mentioned here, could involve commercial interests if we deal with how housing and land use has changed. So that, that any lobbying before the commission is reportable. The other one, you know, it, I know it's important for the folks that follow these commissions very closely, which are us and maybe a few others, to, to know who else is testifying before a commission, to know what the commission is, is deciding, to see the resolutions it provides. So we, you know, often some of these commissions, both redistricting commissions or the last, the last commission, we saw the testimonies that were submitted to, we saw, we saw the testimonies that were submitted to the last commission and like the last day of the commission or the last week. So, you know, it is helpful for advocates to know who else is commenting before the commission, to make sure that we respond or that we know what the commission is thinking.
That's very helpful. And I, you know, I think that Professor Lane laid out a really good roadmap for a successful commission. You know, strong chair, people of gravitas on the commission, having an independent staff, having the adequate budget, extensive public engagement. I think this is, Susan and Ben, you both thought a lot about, and Susan, you commented on this a bit in your testimony as well, of like what real and effective outreach looks like, what that public engagement piece looks like. Would you mind just, both of you, kind of elaborating on how do we ensure this is a successful commission from a public engagement standpoint?
So I have to say, right now, my sense is that the city has really upped its outreach game. I know we still get feedback that people don't know about this, that, or the other thing because it's very difficult to reach six to eight million people in a fragmented information economy and landscape. But, you know, we've also been thinking about this and struggling with other types of commissions and really ensuring that there is a charge to a commission, not just to take the easy way out, put some TV out, put some email out, but actually do outreach in the different neighborhoods that is language appropriate to be sure that all of the communities are aware that they have an opportunity to weigh in and to be heard. And the effective way to do that is to ensure that there are translations and that the outreach occurs through the multiplicity of ethnic media, both online and off, more traditional media that so many of the communities in New York have. And so, you know, I think the Civic Engagement Commission is doing a good job. The CFB has really upped its game in that regard. And so having a specific charge to be sure that this commission is aware that putting a notice in the Daily News is just the beginning. Going on New York One is great, but that you need to worry about Spanish language and Asian languages, Russian and Haitian Creole, so many different languages here. And the ethnic press is eager to, to learn and to cooperate if government takes the time to do the outreach.
Ben, anything you'd like to add on that?
Nope.
Professor, please. And I'll just say, if any of.
I wanted to say, I want to stress something. Oh, sorry. Should I be talking?
You first, but if each of the panelists would like to offer any further closing thoughts, we'll, we'll wrap up the panel after this.
So I want to stress something that Susan said. I thought that we, we held one hearing in every borough before we even entertained an idea to tell the communities who we were, or maybe we even did more, who we were, what our task was and to invite, to invite ideas that they might have to learn from the community. And I thought that was eminently successful and made for a much smoother path of trusting us as we proceeded. So I think that, I think Susan referred to it, maybe Ben, but I thought that was a very valuable exercise to do before we even came up with an idea.
Right. Susan's question on the, the meetings before, to hear from everybody, to solicit their ideas at the beginning, and then to do the round at the end, after you actually have your issues or your questions, to solicit feedback on that too, you know, it's important on.
And then, on the translation thing, I, we were, we had a hearing and all of a sudden, I mean, we probably had eighty people around eleven at night. And all of a sudden, this whole group of about twenty people stood up and they were all had hearing problems and they were demanding that we had a signer. And when you have a signer, you have to have two signers because I think you can work two-hour shifts, as with all translators. And so at the beginning of every meeting, we'd have a sign, the signer would get up and sign and, you know, if anybody needed help, we were, they were here to do it and then they would sit down. Unfortunately or fortunately, I don't know which the answer to that is, it's probably not the remark to make, but nevertheless, every time they did it, I don't think we had a problem ever again. I don't think anybody needed a signer again, even though we had one for probably another thirty meetings. But the point I'm making about it is not having translators available raises, creates a political issue in and of itself, disconnected from whether there are people going to weigh in on the issues or not. People want the opportunity. People want the opportunity to feel included. Uh, we actually printed stuff in Chinese, Spanish, both Mandarin, and you forget the name of the other, the more popular, the more used dialect, and, uh, you know, everything was translated into multiple things, and I think that also helped to really, um, create trust in the commission's efforts to, uh, reach people. So I thought, I think I want to, I'm just emphasizing Susan's ideas there is really workable and solid and useful. Okay, I'm done, sorry.
No, it's great. Thank you.
I just add one point on, um, on Susan's point on public engagement, and some of the recommendations we had here, uh, a few commissions in the past followed this. So luckily, the kind of multiple hearing board base is a, is a cultural norm in some commissions, but if we are indeed going to set new standards for charter commissions here, uh, ones that might be followed by future councils, so, you know, we know this council is, uh, kind of operating in good faith in terms of civic engagement, but we don't know what will happen in the future, this bill is based on the 2018 bill, and future council might be basing their commissions based on this one. So, uh, in that sense, I think it will be helpful to codify these issues in the law that's passed, so we are clear on what are the standards for public engagement.
It's very helpful. We will definitely follow up. Any final thoughts? We cover all, I have to say, I just thought this was a really, um, engaging and insightful conversation, uh, and so I just want to thank, uh, Speaker Quinn, Professor Lane, Susan Lerner, and Ben Weisberg for just sharing your expertise with us. We really appreciate it. Go ahead, Susan, was there something?
I was going to say, we really appreciate the opportunity to talk about in detail. I'm with Professor Lane, uh, in terms of my outreach, outrage about Albany, and stay tuned for a Common Cause report about that. Um, but I have been able to discuss specific bills with the Buffalo Common Council, the Syracuse Common Council, but the New York City Common Council is the standard here in the state, and thank you.
Well, we benefit a great deal from the expertise that good government groups, former legislators, uh, former commission staff and, and academics bring to the process. And so we're going to have a better bill, and ultimately, a better Charter Revision Commission, as a result of the conversation we had today. So I really want to thank you all for, for joining us. We may have somebody online, but we will excuse this panel. Thank you all, and hope you guys have a wonderful afternoon. Thank you so much for making the time.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, we have one person that may or may not be online, so we're going to just give it 30 seconds and then determine if we're adjourning. Councilmember Gennaro, are you doing all right?
I'm good. I'm good.
Good. Thank you for being with us today. Good. If anybody's interested, there are great articles that Professor Lane and Fritz Schwartz worked on about their time on the 89 Charter Revision Commission. There's a New York Law School article, there's a 200, it's 250 pages, is that right? 250 pages? So it's a quick read, but thrilling, and, uh, and we've, I mean, their insights have just, you know, and their reflections have been really helpful for us as we've looked through this process. I think I am going to take this opportu, no, we're giving them.
I mean, go ahead. We're just trying to give them time, because we have to send the lead again.
Oh, we're sending it again. Okay, so you don't want me to adjour? So I'm just filling time. Jim, any exciting updates in Queens you'd like to share?
Um, I think I'd probably do that in private.
All right, fair. Um, good.
Just reset the links, so we don't be, uh, going to see it on, otherwise.
Okay. All right. Oh, there's my charger. I thought I left it at home.
It's definitely, you've been on before, but we actually heard about last hearing.
I think we have given adequate opportunity and time, uh, so I'm sorry to folks who may have missed us, but, um, feel free to reach out with written testimony, and with that, I'm going to adjour the hearing. Thanks so much.